So I'm just gonna go ahead and start the Finance Up Committee meeting. And people can join or look at the reporting if they miss information. So Tim, go ahead and turn it over to your team to talk about some of the ARPA Fund housing programs and other programs that may be given out to your department.
Sure, why don't we start with the Healthy Homes and the Home Improvement Program? And then I'll take Build Back Springfield.
Sounds good.
So Jerry, do you want to start?
I was muted. Why don't I start? And then I know Tina has some specific details about numbers. So the Healthy Homes program is a program that we had had as a pilot using some resilience money after last disasters. We tried it as a pilot in the Six Corners and Memorial Square neighborhoods. We go in and we rehab someone's house completely. And I would say rehab it to bring it up to code, so it meets code standards. But that also includes then, the Healthy Homes component is addressing lead and any other asthma and asthma triggers, asbestos, and you know, taking care of toxins in the home or things that contribute to lead issues, I mean, health issues. So we run this program for a few years, so we had some background with it. So with the ARPA funds, we have extended that from those two neighborhoods, and we've added eligibility to all of the qualified census tract areas. So we've been able to significantly expand it. That program opened in June, and we have had a tremendous number of applications. Along with that, we wanted to offer something but not as... It's an expensive program, I'll say that. So we wanted to offer something but not quite as comprehensive in the rest of the city. So the other program we offered is an exterior repair program. It has a cap of $40,000 per house. And that is anyone in the city can apply for funds to be used to renovate the exterior of their home. So it covers new roofs, porches. I think we sometimes have foundation problems, those sorts of things. Windows, it can, it may include lead if letters in the windows. We also do, I should just mention, we have a lead removal program. So anyone who we're looking at for exterior repair, we're also checking to see if they might be eligible for the lead removal program, and we're giving that to them, or we're doing that as an add-on. These programs are, so I've said, so they're available to homeowners up to... Up to, I'm gonna let Tina explain it, actually, it's up to three times the federal poverty rate.
Yeah, so the ARPA legislation sort of carved out a different way that they're defining what is low and moderate income. So it's either 65% of area median income or 300% of the federal poverty guidelines, which in most household sizes is pretty, is significantly higher than HUD's income determination, which is about 80% of area median income. So we use the higher of the two based on household size.
Thanks. And a few things to note. So I think some of what we learned from the Healthy Homes program is... I'm sorry, I couldn't understand that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know, I'm in and out. I just wanted to ask what the name of that other program is that fixed the exterior?
So it's the Exterior, Exterior Repair Program.
Exterior Repair Program.
Yes.
If it's like, I don't know if you have this information up, but if you give me an estimate, if it's like a two-family, I mean, two individuals in a home, what that income would look like?
Yeah, that was generally...
I have that in front of me, and I can tell you. A two-person household, the income limit would be $54,930. A three-person household, it would be $69,090. And then, you know, the larger the household size, the higher the income limit is. So the largest we have here is an eight-person household, which is $139,890. So it sort of ranges from $42,835 to $139,890, depending on the size of the household.
Is that for both programs, the Healthy Homes and the Exterior?
Yes, it's the same, and that follows the ARPA legislation.
Okay, thank you.
And so how these are structured is, these are forgivable loans. They are, we are lending the money, but the loan burns off pretty quickly over a five-year period. So after the end of five, so 20% a year goes away. At the end of five years, there is no payback required. The reason we did that, just so you know, is we are trying to discourage people who would use this as property flippers. We're trying to invest in people who are invested in Springfield and want to make this their home, and we want to help Springfield folks who are staying have good quality housing. We, at the same time, we recognize people may need to move for various reasons. So we don't, we don't want them to have to pay everything back necessarily. And so it is this phasing out, the longer they stay, the more benefit they get from this. Some of these grants can be very large. The Healthy Homes grants are, I think, are average in the initial program. So this program is just getting started. But in the initial program, as I said, just in the old Six Corners and Memorial Square neighborhoods, it's about $94,000 a house. We, and again, this is not, this is not upgrades, this is not, you know, kitchen or bath upgrades or anything like that. It is bringing houses to code. So we really were struck by how many people have literal leaking roofs and not functioning heat or plumbing or electrical and, you know, real structural issues. So it is really hitting some deep need around housing repair for very low-income households, for the most part.
So when I do want to make note that that $94,000 is not limited just to the repair costs, it also includes any temporary relocation that may have to take place and includes legal fees and inspection costs, things like that. So just want to make...
Great. And then, I don't know, it seems like now might be a good time to turn it over to Tina, who can give information about the applications received and where we are in processing them.
Before we turn it over to Tina, I just want to acknowledge Counselor President Jesse Letterman. Thanks for joining, Counselor. And I have one more question. These are owner-occupied homes, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so Tina.
Sure. So just to give a quick overview of where we stand, we have gotten about 136 completed applications for the Exterior Repair Program. Five of those were ready to move to the inspection phase, and I think all of those inspections have been completed to date. And then for Healthy Homes, we have received approximately 107 applications, with 11 of those already in the inspection phase. So definitely progress. I think it might be helpful, Jerry, if you just kind of overview, or I'm happy to do it, whatever you think, sort of what the process is like, just because it's not as simple as folks just, you know, applying and getting funds. It's a little bit of a more complicated process.
Right. I think some of what we found with the Healthy Homes, and you know, the pilot we did, and we worked out a lot of things, we were fortunate to have had that. Because I think what we realized, you know, and as any homeowner knows, housing repairs, especially that degree of housing repairs, can be complicated and difficult to manage. So we have, so we manage it. We, and I think we also saw, you know, lots of people get taken advantage of by contractors, particularly after the tornado. So we manage the process. So what happens is a homeowner comes in, they apply. We see if they're income-eligible and, you know, have a deed to the house. And then we send out an inspector who will inspect the property, find out what code violations there are to give us a comprehensive report of where the property stands. From that, we will write specs for what work needs to be completed. We then send out an invitation to bid to a large, you know, we have a large and always were recruiting more for a number of contractors. We send it to the contractors, inviting them to bid. We arranged with the homeowner, we meet them at the house, they do a walkthrough. They see the project, they see the specs we've written for the project. They bid the project. From there, we're able to select the best bid, which we do, you know, working with the homeowner. And then we help, we have a contract that we have drafted for the homeowner to enter into with that contractor. We have a grant agreement with the homeowner. But then, as the work progresses, we inspect it, and we will not authorize payment unless the work is done satisfactorily. So depending on, you know, the size of the project, we may go out a few times and inspect. Or if it's a small project, we may just inspect at the end, and we're able to look at it and say, yes, this is good quality work, this is completed. And we get the homeowners, okay, that this has met their satisfaction. Then we sign off on the funding, and then the homeowner signs off on the funding. But so we're involved from start to finish. We're not just sending checks and having homeowners do, arrange it all themselves. And I think one of the things, you know, I talked about the pilot we had, we also have had for a long time an Exterior Repair Program. In that program, and really years before we had, you know, and I think that was telling us the number of houses that needed assistance. And I think I said exterior, Emergency Repair Program. In the Emergency Repair Program, the original design was we would approve homeowners, and homeowners would go out and get quotes. And we found that that was really hard for homeowners. They often had trouble finding contractors, they had trouble getting contractors to show up. So it caused a lot of delay and a lot of headache for... So we decided, as we started this program, that, you know, we have some efficiencies of scale so we could be sending out to many, many contractors and keep sort of a roster of contractors who were used to working with us and, you know, know that this is a steady stream of work and that they get paid and that, you know, it's a good stream of work. So it makes it easier for us to get contractors out there to actually bid on the properties. I'm gonna pause and see if there's any other questions, or...
Yeah. I wanted to see if Counselors had any questions still. Counselor Gova?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much for this report and this update, Jerry and Tina. A question that I have is that, I know when we were doing the ARPA workshops out here in Indian Orchard, a lot of the residents submitted applications, like for seniors, for household repairs like that. I think I heard in another meeting that those applications were taken and put into these programs. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the ARPA office did send us a significant chunk of the housing repair applications. We have had some of those applicants tell us that they don't want to go through this process, and they would rather sort of keep their application over there. And so there's a small, very small percentage that have gone back to the ARPA office. There may also be folks that, as we're going through this process, we realize they don't qualify, whereas maybe they don't have code violations and they think they do, or they don't income-qualify. And so the process we worked out is that those will then go back to the ARPA office for them to determine if they qualify for the household assistance.
Okay, because that was an...
Ultimately, those folks would get a bigger benefit if they go through this program.
Right. And I'm wondering if, what the barrier is for them to use this program as opposed to the ARPA, if they're, if they understand it completely, or what the hesitation is. So maybe I'll follow up with some of the people that I spoke to in the past on that. And I guess another thing is the, do the houses, like for either program, both of them, they have to have code violations then, correct?
So they have to have code violations, or in the instance of the Exterior Repair Program, one of the big issues that we are looking at are roofs. So if folks, if their roof is long past the warranty and the useful life of the roof, and it's starting to deteriorate, we're looking at potential replacement there. So they may not be cited for a code violation, but there's the recognition that that leads to deterioration that is going to cause much more damage to the home. So that is one of the things.
And I want to say, it very much is not about cited code violations. So people are not calling, you know, most people, I think, that call have never been cited for a code violation. We just, when we go out, those are the kinds of violations we're looking for to write up the specs to say this is something that needs to be fixed.
So specifically, right. And I should also say, to the code enforcement violation piece, we actually don't use city inspectors. We have a third-party firm that does these reports and inspections for us. And so really, the only communication between us and code enforcement is around if there's questions of if a certain repair will meet code or reaching out to them if they have an active case with code enforcement, just to let them know that they're in the queue for funding.
Okay, and just one more question. So how much is allocated into each program from the ARPA money that the city got?
So right now, this is, the fund, two programs together are funded at $5 million.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield.
Two programs together are funded at $5 million, so total? Because I thought Healthy Homes got $4 million, and then the other one got $12 million on the Exterior Program. No?
Well, if I'm, if I, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitfield, the Exterior Repair Program has always been in existence, correct?
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke. There is an Emergency Repair Program that has always been in existence.
And is that funded?
That is not funded by ARPA, that is funded through our CDBG program. And I believe we fund it at about $400,000 a year.
I see. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Whitfield, thank you.
No problem. So the RFP process, does that go through procurement, or how does that process work?
So it's run out, you're talking for contractors?
Yeah.
It's run out of our office. We have a list of approximately 100 pre-approved contractors that are contacted at each bid. We are actually in the process of doing, obviously, additional outreach to more contractors to try to get there. That outreach process right now looks like we have pulled the list of all licensed construction supervisors and home improvement contractors from the state. So all of the folks in the three western counties that are licensed will start to get letters from them, asking them if they'd like to join our mailing list. And if so, they have to submit their insurance, their license, and just an application with their contact information and their specialty area to get on our list.
Okay, so with the housing programs, like, so if folks aren't qualified by the income or Qualified Census Tract, they go back over to our, and they continue with their process to the ARPA team?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from Counselors? Thank you all, that was very thorough, definitely appreciated. And I'm sorry, I missed the numbers because my phone went out when I was driving. On the Healthy Homes, how many applications we got in and what is going through the inspection process?
Sure. So for the Healthy Homes program, we right now have 107 completed applications, and 11 of those of the 107 are in the inspection process. And for Exterior Repair, we've got 136 completed applications, and five of those are currently in the inspection process.
And do you have the number? Go ahead.
I was gonna add, and we have been in contact with all of them to tell them their application is complete. We are now in the process of reviewing to make sure they're income-eligible. We may need to request one or more things if we find questions when we do that. But otherwise, we're doing that. The next time we'll contact them is to say that they're eligible, and then we'll be in touch to set up the inspection. So we're in touch with all of them, so they know where they are in the process.
That's fantastic. And the ones that, do you have a number on the ones that had to go back to the ARPA team, or no?
Um, I don't have the exact number on that. I want to say off the top of my head, so far, it's been maybe five.
Five, okay.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
All right.
That will, that will change a little bit, will fluctuate certainly as we, this process.
Definitely. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Whitfield. Can I say one thing? Just the, 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 the income guidelines, I guess. It's just, and I have to say this every time, you guys already know. I feel like it's still, you know, very low. People who are, people have to work two jobs to make ends meet, right? So if it's a couple that both of them are working, they're gonna go over the $54,900, which is a poverty for two people. So I just want that, and I'll say it every single time. We do something about it, so thank you.
Just on that point, Counselor, I think it's important to note that the ARPA legislation itself is very, very clear on what it considers low to moderate income. And, you know, we have really tried to deploy what they have given us as guidelines so that we can get as high as we possibly can. But it's the legislation itself that's dictating it back.
Yeah, and I understand that, Tim, and thank you so much for that because it is not a Spring, a City of Springfield problem. I realize that, you know, the federal government has this problem. So we can somehow, us amongst ourselves, we can some, maybe figure out how we can, you know, help the rest of the population. But I, like I said, I just have to say it every time. Thank you.
Yeah, that is a problem, but I think, like, if we can legislatively write to some of the federal legislators and to HUD itself too, and try to get that. But you are absolutely right. So we're gonna move over to Tim with the Build Back Springfield program, and talk about that program.
Sure. So the Development Division designed the Build Back Springfield program to address a variety of COVID-related capital improvement needs within qualified census tracts. The key components of the program were to attract private investment in redeveloping historic properties that were experiencing significant economic instability, increased vacancy and deferred maintenance and structural concerns. Adaptive reuse of vacant space is a key component of the program. Projects would only be considered by the program in qualified census tracts and be designed to offer benefits to the residents within those tracts. They would provide public services to communities that are underserved by businesses, job opportunities, and the project would require, be required to address existing disproportionate health, economic, and social disparities that were exacerbated by COVID-19 pandemic, and improve health outcomes for the impacted community. Eligible projects within this program could include commercial rehab, soft costs, investments in development, and/or tenant fit-out for eligible businesses. The intended results of the program are increase in preservation of historic properties as per the program goals, as well as significant job creation for local residents and new and existing small business growth opportunities. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have with regards to the program.
So has Qualified Census Tract always been in the application?
Qualified Census Tracts is a category, is a designation category under the ARPA legislation. And it basically, we've been trying to use the Qualified Census Tract, which covers a pretty significant swath of the city because that demonstrates where there has been disproportionate impact.
So has that always been specified in this particular application?
I believe so, yes.
We always specified that it had to be in a Qualified Census Tract area and a historic building?
The historic, historic has always been a requirement, while historic and/or of locals' significance. So you could have a building that might have, you know, significant local, be of local significance, but it might not necessarily qualify as historic.
And that's always been written into the application?
Yes.
I remember when you, Counselor Hurst, and I was having a conversation, and it kept coming up that it had to be a historic building. And I then, I never heard the, this part about the have, like, historic or some type of meaning in the community. That's what I'm gonna break it down.
That has always been there, the locals, local significance. So, you know, I'm sorry, late went out. They... The... There could be buildings that, if, for example, might have been community gathering points that ultimately have local significance, but they just might not be recognized as fully defined as historic.
All right, before we go into, I have questions about a specific application. So before we go into that, does anyone have questions on the program itself? Because I, I want to move into the Honor LLC Pellegrino building and how that got qualified, and I want to move over to that, if no one else has questions.
This one question, Counselor Whitfield, is how much of the ARPA money was allocated for this, this program, Tim?
$15 million.
Thank you. That's all I had.
So Tim, can you speak to that particular application, applicant?
I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have with regards to it. I don't know where you...
How did it, how did it qualify? Because who wrote, like, you sent me a application, who wrote that application?
That was, that was...
West.
That came out of the Development Division.
Under your...
Yes.
Okay, so you wrote to the ARPA team requesting this funding for this organization, for this building?
So there was a conversation with regards to the funding that would be allocated to this type of program, and then the application was basically written in response to that funding.
And your department wrote the application?
Yes. And we wrote the neighborhood applications as well, and the housing applications.
The neighborhood application, housing applications, which housing, no, not, no. Did you write his application, like, specifically?
Oh, no, you're asking about the applicant?
Yeah, applicant.
No, we did not write the applicant's application, that's their responsibility.
Oh, they wrote that, okay.
Yes.
So...
I'm sorry, I got confused. I thought you were talking about the application that's available to anyone that wants to apply to the program.
No, I meant the applicant's application. So they qualified because what?
So there were four specific points associated with this application that the review committee that was based here actually took into consideration. The project was located and designed to serve residents of a qualified census tract that would provide essential public service to residents within qualified census tract to offer new attainable job opportunities for low and moderate income residents. Second, it would address pre-existing health disparities exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic by low-income residents of a qualified census tract, and would contribute to improved health outcomes for low-income residents within the qualified census tracts through the redevelopment of currently vacant property that is a public safety hazard. Would activate several vacant storefronts within the downtown neighborhood business district, thus improving walkability and public safety and preservation of multiple historic buildings. and preservation of multiple historic buildings suffering deferred maintenance issues as well as long-term commercial vacancy exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Those were the four points that merited, uh, the award of the application.
So this building is historic?
All, all, all the buildings involved in this application are historic. They go back to the mid, mid to late eighteen hundreds.
Are they historic on the historical registry? On the registry? Is it listed as a historic property?
Are you talking about the local registry or the federal?
Talking about historic registry, the state registry?
They're, they are historic.
Okay, um, because when I looked at the application, it said no.
No, they're not, they're not on the federal register. That's what the question asked.
The federal register is different.
There's a federal historic register.
And there's a, a state one and a municipal one?
Yes.
And which one are they registered on?
Well, they're, i- i- they're deemed as historic properties by the city, and I believe also by the state.
Are you sure, or you think? Can you double check?
I can double check for you, that's fine.
Okay, and then you said, um, because they.
But i- in so much, in so much, Counselor, in so much as they date back to the mid to late eighteen hundreds, I think we can agree that they are historic.
Yeah, but I'm looking for legally. I'm not, not just based on the date. Um, I know that, like, some properties have to go through a process, to be honest. I don't know, Councilor Letterman might know more about it, um, than I know, than I do, but they have to go through this process to get on this historic registry or something like that. Um, so I'm, I'm looking for that information. Because if any building is built before, what year makes them historic? Like, what's the year that will make them historic, that we can agree on?
Are, are you asking me, or are you asking Counselor Letterman?
Asking you. Like, what is the year that makes a building a historic building? Is it a hundred years old? Um.
Well, I mean, I, I, it, what the Historic Commission has looked at is that if the property is over a hundred years old, there's a demolition delay associated with that. Um, but I, 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 I think if, if we can, i- i- the Historic Commission and the Preservation Trust has looked at all of these properties and considered them to be historic.
Okay, and then you said it helps disproportionately impacted populations. So what, what is the scope of this building? Is it gonna be reused in a way? Like, how is it gonna help this population outside of job creation?
Well, that is, that is a category in terms of assistance.
The job creation piece, but they could still hire whoever they want technically. Once, once the building is rehabbed.
Well, i- i- they could.
I mean, because when you go by qualified census tract, I'm gonna just be honest, you can kind of be almost anywhere in the city of Springfield, and I still think that the funds should go to folks that was disproportionately impacted by COVID. Um, it should go to these, um, businesses, these small businesses and organizations that were impacted by COVID. Uh, and that happens to be the black and Latinx community, not the rich and wealthy, um, community that may have had a lot of opportunities to not live in crowded spaces or, um, had opportunities to kind of like avoid COVID more than others. And, and so, and this is where I struggle with this, uh, particular application because it's, it's just how, how you put the wording in there, um, to qualify certain individuals. And looks like it's gonna be like a lot of individuals that fall on the wealthier side of, of the, I'm gonna just say the wealth gap, you know? Historically, um, white people have, have had a huge wealth gap than black and Latinx communities. The money came to the city because this population, and still this particular population probably isn't gonna benefit as much from this program as, um, white people.
I, I don't agree with that assessment.
You don't agree with that assessment?
No, there's only been one, one award in this program thus far. You and I have had multiple conversations about other applications that we are looking at, that.
I only know one, uh, well, two, one other that you're helping through right now, and we had one conversation with another business, but I don't even know where that stands right now. Um, but.
But I don't think, I, I don't think you can base the program on one award, Counselor.
This one, this one has been awarded already?
Yes, this has been announced and awarded.
And what's the other?
Contract now.
What's the other one that's been awarded? Cause you said it was two?
Yes, there was a small amount of money that was advanced for pre-development work on the Indian Orchard Fire Station as part of the program.
Okay, tell me about that application. Who submitted that one?
We did it as a departmental request because that's a city-owned building.
So it's pre-development work on that building and how, that's a historic building, and it qualified by the same?
It is a historic building. It's been identified by the Preservation Trust as a property that's in danger. Um, and we're working with the Indian Orchard Citizens Council to look at the redevelopment, uh, of that facility, uh, for the use by the Neighborhood Council as a community center.
Okay. And are you gonna go through other neighborhoods and do the same thing and look for buildings that may be good community use in other neighborhoods and work with those, um?
We are, we are actively working with Old Hill to address their, uh, facility. Um, we are. I'm sorry.
Which facility is that?
Old Hill Neighborhood.
Oh, they're, the building that they actually use for, like, meetings?
Yes, yes. Um, and as I said, we're working with the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. Um, we are also working with, uh, McKnight.
McKnight? And have they identified a building as well?
Uh, we have not gotten to the point that we've identified a, a building or a specific location. We've been walking, working through the, those issues with McKnight. But that's outside the scope of this program. That's under.
That's under the other initiative, the Neighborhood Council initiative?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Counselor Letterman?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I, I actually thought, uh, that Tim was indicating that the Build Back Better initiative could be, could be used towards community centers, but he just seems to have clarified that. So, so the, my, Build Back Better can only be used for.
The redevelopment, um, is the redevelopment study is, is build back program. It's like a million dollars. The neighborhood money, they got a hundred thousand a piece or something like that? Is that correct?
I think he's, I think he's talking about the, the neighborhood development, but I think it was twelve million.
That's correct.
Okay.
And is that what you're, okay. But Build Back Better can only be used for housing, right?
No, Build Back Better can be used for, actually, it can be used for adaptive reuse for housing, Counselor. Um, but that housing has to be affordable housing under the ARPA regulations.
Just clarify what program you're using for the, um, fire station?
For the fire, for the fire station, we are using build back, and we're using a small allocation for pre-development to establish existing conditions. Coming back to Counselor Letterman's question, it can be used for housing. It has to ultimately be affordable housing, and it also can be, uh, used for commercial development as well. And the intent of this program, um, is ultimately to bring in investors in to these projects, which ultimately don't pencil out and therefore don't necessarily advance into redevelopment without getting, uh, subsidy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
Tim, so you're, so you're saying Build Back Better, that the Indian Orchard Fire Station development would qualify under Build Back Better into a community center? That a community center would, would qualify?
That would be the adapted.
Better investment.
That's correct. That would be the adaptive reuse of the space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor, go by.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, and, um, just to clarify, I think, I know that, uh, the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, I'm, I'm directly involved in this, is, um, has been talking about that fire station for the last, I wanna say, at least, uh, six years that I've been the president of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. Um, and that fire station has been put up for RFP. We submitted our RFPs. Um, and I think that, you know, this opportunity came at a great time for the fire station because we don't have a community center out here. We don't have a senior center. We don't have, uh, um, after-school programs, um, for our kids. So that's the reason that we actually, uh, am, are working with Tim, um, and the city to make sure that we have access to these services out here. And as you know, the Indian Orchard community is very, uh, much underserved and needs all these services, so, um, that's where, I'm, I'm excited about this, so. Thank you.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning the program at all. I'm just questioning where the funding is going and how these things come about. Um, so it's not as transparent. Like, I didn't know that you were, were looking for a community center, um, in Indian Orchard until probably like, maybe a year ago. Um, it is needed, um, definitely is needed in, in that community, so I'm not questioning the program. I'm just trying to figure out the funding sources, um, and how, how, how these things are being developed. Um, thank you, Counselor Goban. Um, Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to, uh, iterate the same. I, I have no problem with the, the fire station development. I think it's a great reuse. I just didn't realize that, um, Build Back Better could be used for non, non, uh, revenue commercial generating and/or housing projects. I thought those were the only two categories. So it's helpful to understand that it can also be used for, uh, essentially a nonprofit community benefit if it is a, an adaptive reuse. That's what I think we're understanding now.
Yes, Counselor.
That is good to know because I didn't, I didn't realize that either. I just thought it had to be like reused into some type of, um, well, I didn't know it could be mixed-use housing and commercial, but I thought that was the use, so, good to know, um.
So I, if I could just add to though, you know, w- w- there's been a lot of commentary about downtown having so much focus. Um, the, i- i- there is a social vulnerability index that comes out from the CDC, um, that basically looks at, it looks at a whole segment of categories that basically, um, eh, defines neighborhoods as highly vulnerable, um, eh, with regards to their health, their, uh, economics, um, eh, eh, and their ability to, um, sustain, um, eh, disasters such as the pandemic. And in the social vulnerability index, I think it's important for the counselors all to know that Metro Center is the most socially vulnerable census tract in the city. And over ninety percent of the housing that's in that census tract is subsidized housing. Um, so, you know, w- w- bringing economic opportunity to the Metro Center is critically important, given the population that exists within the center and it, its vulnerable status.
For clarifying that point, um, and I know that that's a great study, but we still got a whole city that we gotta, um, think about. Even though it is the most vulnerable population, um, we wanna grow the whole city, cause when I look at cities like Lawrence and, and how they redevelop, um, some of their neighborhoods and different areas of Boston, while they may not be the most, um, impacted community, um, when it comes to most vulnerability, they still are looking throughout the city and not just in the downtown area, so, um, thank you for sharing, sharing that.
Yeah, clearly you know that we are looking at the entire city, Counselor.
Because I don't see where all the work is, um, happening throughout the city. I always see like funding for, um, downtown, you know? I live in East Springfield, so I would love to see something happen over in Springfield Plaza, and, and the mall has been like, you know, empty for a long time, and I don't see a lot of redevelopment going there, but like, most of the funding that comes through, you see that it's going to the downtown area. Um, whether it's starting in the metro area, going to the North End or the South End, it's still happening, um, primarily in that area of the city of Springfield. So I, I, I believe you're looking at the whole city. I just wanna see more action throughout the whole city. Yeah, I, I, I do believe that you, you, if you had it your way, you would fix the entire city, but, um, I just wanna see, you know, more action in other areas of the city as well.
And if I may.
I can appreciate that, Counselor.
One moment, Counselor Goban. Um, no, no problem. Counselor Goban?
Thank you. Um, I think, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate, um, uh, what Tim said about the Metro Center being, I would say, one of the most vulnerable, right? Because we have a lot of vulnerable pockets in the city. But I think that, you know, the city, the neighborhood councils are the ones who should be saying, like we did, right? Going to Tim, hey, Tim, we have this building here, we need a community center, how can we make this work? I think if the neighborhood council would kind of like step up, maybe the Old Hill Council is doing that. I don't know. Maybe, uh, I know the North End does that a lot. So I think, you know, uh, sharing some of the onus with the neighborhood councils, I think is something that, um, would maybe put more attention to the specific neighborhoods like East Springfield, like Forest Park. Um, honestly, some neighborhood councils say they don't need any services in their neighborhoods. They think they're good, you know, a- and that's their perception. Although there's a lot of poverty in some of these neighborhoods that are being, you know, uh, disqualified by their own neighborhood councils, you know? So, um, I think that might be something that we can talk about with the councils, maybe talk to Ed Whitley, and see how we can maybe encourage the, um, neighborhood councils to, to put some eyes on their neighborhoods and find, you know, some properties or, or something that the neighborhood needs so that they could call attention to it. Cause that's what we've done out here in Indian Orchard, and you see everything that's happening. Thank you.
I think that that's great, and I think you'll be a great person to train these neighborhood councils on how to get active and, and get thi- this job done. Um, cause you have been doing a great job over at Orchard, so, um, you know, sometimes people just need a hand. They need training, and, and they don't know where to go. So I think that, um, it'd be great if you, if you could be a spokesperson on how you got it done and a- and encourage other neighborhood councils to get it done. And then some of the neighborhood councils are just aging, and they just don't have the energy or the time or the spunk or, you know, the grit anymore, you know? So maybe it's time to like, you know, rotate. I'm just gonna be real, rotate the responsibility, but yeah, I think that's a great idea. Let, let's get some training done so they can start identifying buildings in their neighborhood. That'd be great. Thanks for all you do in Indian Orchard, and, um, hopefully we can spread it throughout the city.
Yes.
So, and I do just wanna jump in here real quick and say, you know, I, there is also the Neighborhood Recovery Fund where we did reach out to all of the eligible neighborhoods, um, encourage them to submit applications. That is around, more around pedestrian safety upgrades, tree trimming, but there are also some building requests in there. And we've received applications from almost all of the eligible neighborhood councils and are working through those now. So some neighborhoods have already gotten awards, and we're working on trying to award some additional funding as we work through those applications and do walks and tours with those councils.
Tina, I think, um, Counselor Whitfield and, uh, Counselor Goban's comment, uh, about, you know, engaging with the neighborhood councils would be good in terms of a- a- as we're doing the neighborhood program, we probably should also be integrating the whole commentary around, uh, build back as well.
Sure, definitely.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And just, uh, I wanna say it right here, if Build Back Better could have more money for the Indian Orchard Fire Station, I'll be okay with that.
Sure you will. I'm sure they could fund the whole project. You will take it.
Yes.
At least it's, um, it, you know, it's on the radar and, and the redevelopment is happening, and, um, and, and.
I did, we're very excited, and we're grateful to Tim and his team for, you know, helping us out thus far.
That's great. Tim, Tim is great to work with. Um, I know I'm putting a lot of pressure. I'm just trying to make sure everything is equitable in the city of Springfield because that hasn't historically been the trend. Um, and it's just, train, um, change that mentality and make sure that all neighborhoods in the city of Springfield is getting equal treatment. And so I think, Tim, that's why I harp on, um, downtown so much because that's what we hear from the neighborhoods, you know? They don't, they may not know the studies that you know and, and the information, you know? They just know that I live over here and we feel, um, Neglected or, um, overlooked, so.
I understand that, Counselor, and I appreciate that concern.
Yeah. All right, I think I said all I had to say today. And that's what I needed. Is anybody else that, any final comments?
Uh, Counselor Whitfield, I would just encourage you. When those residents talk to you, encourage them to join their neighborhood council.
I try.
Start talking there, cause I'm sure they have a lot of great ideas.
Right, they don't go once and then they just won't go back. You know, some of them, like you said, working two or three jobs. You know, they're tired and they got families and things like that, and so that becomes priority. That is the priority. You know, so sometimes it's hard, but maybe like a blended approach with zone and stuff will make it easier for folks.
Yeah.
But that's all we gotta discuss with Ed Whitley and we gonna get him to get you to be a trainer. For, uh, for neighborhood buildings and, um, we'll go from there.
If, if I just might, before you close out, I, I want to thank you all for taking, uh, both the time and having the interest to better understand the programs. Uh, you know, there are concerns out there and if, if there are, you know, we, we clearly wanna hear them and address them. Uh, with you. Thanks.
Well, thank you. You guys always have your stuff together, though. You always have your facts, the laws, the numbers. So I don't have to be like, well, what about this law? And never show it to me, cause you always have it. So, thank you for being prepared and, um. I just really enjoy working with this department.
Thank you all.
We're gonna close the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.